Today is November 18th at 6:01 PM. We are here at the Kettering Board of Education Regular Session here at the Recital Hall of Kettering Fairmont High School. We'll start things off with our mission. The mission of Kettering City Schools in partnership with the family and community is to guarantee a superior educational learning experience for all students by providing a positive and innovative learning environment while responsibly utilizing resources. If you're able, please, wait, yeah. Oh, sorry, roll. I'm jumping again. Ready to go.
Here.
Ms. Kane.
Here.
Ms. Richards.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins?
Ms. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Ms. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes. Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America- And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I was excited to hear all of our students get involved in the pledge. Okay, next item on the agenda. Minutes from our October 21st regular meeting, November 4th work session. We have approval.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 regular meeting and November 4th, 2025 work session as they were presented.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins, will you please take the role?
Ms. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Ms. Richards.
Abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, recognition reports. We will start with food and nutrition update. Mrs. Beerman?
So I put on your computer as a presentation since you have your back to the slideshow. Hi, I'm Mary Lynn Beerman and I'm with the Food and Nutrition Department. And thank you for the opportunity to talk about our department because I think we really excel and do a great job with Kettering City Schools. About the school lunch program, I'm not sure that everyone knows what we do, so I'll just give you a little history of what programs we offer and a little bit about the department. We offer three different programs under the National School Lunch Program. We also do the breakfast program and the Seamless Summer Option Program, which we offer at Greenlot. And we've going on our third year, so that's been pretty successful. We also provide services at Keckick and to Montgomery County Educational Service Centers. We serve about 1,500 breakfasts every day and about 4,200 lunches a day. We have about 65% participation in our program, at lunch and about 20% at breakfast. We have 58 cafeteria workers, 13 managers, and three office personnel. And the most of all, the most important thing is the Food Service Department is self-sufficient. We do not take any monies from the general fund. And with that being said, I want to talk to you a little bit about how school lunch is funded. It's a little unique and not everyone is aware of how we do that. We operate like a little business within the school district. Our total revenue for the department is a little over $4 million. It's about $41,4139,000. Of that, of those revenues, 2.87 million are federal reimbursements. And that's federal reimbursements, that's not any money from the local tax base. That's all through the USDA National School Lunch Program. Of that, 600,000 from the breakfast program and 22, 2.2 millions from the lunch program. We also, in, sorry, two years ago, the state of Ohio picked up the reduced portion of the, well, school lunch is broken into three categories: free lunch, reduced lunch, and paid lunch. So if you qualify for free or reduced, at this point in time, there's no cost to the families. With that being said, the reduced portion is picked up by the state of Ohio. So the portion that the parents would pay is paid through the state of Ohio. The federal government still pays the federal portion of the payment. Local revenues come up to about 1.2 million, which is about 30% of the budget. So federal reimbursement's about 70%, local is about 30%. Most of that is online payments that we get through our Pay School Central Program. And that covers breakfast, lunch, and all of our a la carte purchases. Our expenditures are about $3.7 million. And about 80% of that is labor and benefits and food and supplies. Our food and supplies are reduced a little bit because within that we participate in the commodity program, so that reduces our food costs. The other expenses that we deal with in our department are equipment repairs, online credit card payment. We don't charge the parents any fees for processing the payments online, so we absorb those fees, which is about $70,000 a year. So that means we're collecting a lot of money online. Equipment purchases and then other just promotional products that we help support our program So profit for the last year is about $367,000. And as a nonprofit department, we really aren't supposed to make like a ton of money, but we're supposed to make enough to cover all of our expenses. And we cannot have more than three months' worth of operating expenses. And our cash balance is 1.5 million, and that is, that's a little bit over three months' worth of operating expenses. And with that, if we have in excess of that, then we have to have a spin-down program from the state of Ohio. Now on to some of the more fun stuff. So this past year, so this is recapping '24, '25, we did a remodel at KMS and then we also introduced the Smart Mouth Pizza Program. So we're hand-making and have a kiosk for personal pan pizzas at KMS. And we do between 350 and 400 personal pan pizzas every day that we offer the pizza. And in addition to that, the program, Smart Mouth Company, donates food and monies to needy families and hungry kids. So so far, KMS has helped contribute 3,500 meals to needy children in addition to Kettering. A picture says a thousand words. So in addition to just feeding lunch and, you know, serving kids, we'd like to do some fun stuff. So we continue all year to do promotional items. So this was one of the things we did was we had a spring lunch, so it was like kind of like a spring fling. So we had all the kitchens decorated in the flowers, and they just go crazy with decorations. And then this was at Keckick, all the kids decorated the walls, and then they won Best School Decoration Award, so they got the flower wall. In addition to the spring fling, we did a Gritschmas Lunch and a Hello Winter. And this helps our program because the kids get really excited about it, so our participation increases 10 to 15% depending on which promotion we're running. We had a Super Bowl party or promotion, and then we had kids dress up in their favorite team outfit. Obviously, this was last year when the Bengals were doing a little better. And then if they dressed up in jerseys or whatever, then they got like a special token. I think we gave them pencils for the Super Bowl Day. I was really proud of this one. This was something that was brand new to Kettering. We did a Meals with Shields program, so we invited both the fire department and the police department in to have lunch with our students. So they helped serve lunch, and then they went out and mingled with the students and just let them know that they're there protecting them every day. And that will be a new tradition that we'll do every year. One other thing that was new this past year, ANC, the School Nutrition Association, is a program that supports schools all over the country. They have a foundation, and we have a conference, it's the ANC, it's the Annual National Conference. They have a scholarship to provide funding for new attendees. So I nominated two of our attendees to go to the ANC, which was in San Antonio. So Tammy was one of the awards recipients of the scholarship, and then Missy Heisel went as well. And what happens, they get to see all the new greatest and latest vendor products, best practices that are offered in school lunch, and just mingling about with other school food professionals. It was, it's a pretty cool experience. In addition to all that, we have to make sure that the department is able to cook our food, so we have to make sure our equipment's working and all that stuff. So this year, we continue to just buy equipment like just on a rotating basis. Hopefully, we can, hopefully, the bond passes and we can get some new equipment. This, our big purchase this year was a new dish machine at Fairmont High School. So that really helps them reduce the time that they're spending at the sink. Staff updates, we had lots of staff that had perfect attendance. We had a couple of managers retire. We had, we have two new managers this year. We had two last year. And we have, we have a very low turnover rate. I don't know what the percentage is, but we had like five or six new staff added of the 56, so I think that's, oh, and one of the reasons why I'm here is to do a nutrition standards update, which is required by the state of Ohio. So all buildings in Kettering do follow all of our Smart Snack compliant and follow all board policies governing all nutrition standards. Okay? Sure.
The 3,500 meals that the Kettering Middle School students earn for needy children, are those children in our community? Where are those?
They're worldwide.
Worldwide, okay.
Yes, because the Smart Snack Program is-
I suspected, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda, Fairmont High School building report, Ms. Dinslow?
Well, I brought a team, so I would like to introduce the team. I would like to introduce Ryan Bramble, Oliver Nitz, Ethan Bowermaster, and Mr. Renshaw as well. We would, one, thank you for having us tonight. We love opportunities to share what we're doing at the high school, and this is one of the most positive and strategic partnerships that we would like to showcase. So in line with our Portrait of a Firebird, we have several groups over the summer that partnered together from construction trades, the Kettering Alternative School Program Band, Art Cross Country, Football, Hope Squad. There was another group, I can't remember the name off the top of my head. We had so many, wrestling as well, yes, Young Life, come together to create and update our East Unit Courtyard, but for various reasons. So it was a two-part project. One piece focused on the outdoor spaces of the art room, and then the other piece of the courtyard then focused on the beds for, the raised vegetable beds and mulching and just various pieces that go into the work that the students have completed here. So I'm just going to highlight just a couple of things because I think that we would rather show you than talk about it with you. So these are some of the ways that the art space is being used. It's being used as an outdoor space for students, as an extension of the classroom. Thank you to the Kettering Education Foundation, who provided grant money for some of the supplies that were purchased in order to achieve this. Some of the uses of the vegetable gardens, you will love when it's in action here, but those are just a couple of benefits that have come from these strategic partnerships. And then we'll hear more from our student leaders here in just a moment. So could you please click on the link? So as we end on the peaceful water feature, which is lovely out there, I would love for our students just to say a couple of takeaways and things that they've learned in their, in their work and collaboration.
Hello, my name is Ethan Bowermaster. I helped with all the mulching and everything out in the East Unit Courtyard, and I thought it was a great thing to do. I mean, I personally love gardening and stuff. And when Mr. Renshaw came to the band room when we were all practicing and stuff and asking for a helping hand, I obviously jumped to do it. I feel like it was a great opportunity because, I don't know, I felt like I needed to help out, and I was just bored, so decided to do it. I'm also in marching band with Ethan, and we're kind of in the same boat like with this. We both got approached by Mr. Renshaw and the group, and I think one of the reasons why we jumped on it so hard was like, obviously, we always want to help, but throughout marching band, our director, Mr. Phillips, is always like telling us like, you always want to leave a place better than you found it, and you always want to help people. And that's kind of just what they teach us in general at Fairmont, and just that's kind of the values that we've adapted to. And I think it's great, obviously, we see that the garden is going to be helpful for so many people. So, yeah, I'm really happy that we did it, and I just think it's, it was a great opportunity for us if-
I think what it really showcases is there's a lot of kids that want to help, and all I had to do was reach out. I will say, the way I reached out, because I got to the city of Kettering, they gave me all kinds of mulch and compost, and they were really super supportive of helping the program with the school. And they, next thing I know, I've got two dump truck loads of mulch out there and compost. It was the summer and I, it was just me. And so, so I actually, because band's always there, and then, so I went to the different teams and we just said, listen, I just need people to haul wheelbarrows. I said, I'm the oldest guy here, I said, but I'll, I will load up every wheelbarrow for you. I just need you guys to come over and push them out. Well, they didn't know I had a Bobcat, you know, so-
The cat was amazing.
I know. They would haul them all the way because you had to go through the building and then into the courtyard, and it was a lot. I mean, I couldn't, once or one or two trips and I was done.
I was the only person that didn't spend any of that.
But they made a ton of trips, and I think marching band, there was like five of you guys doing it, and then they had rakers, and there was like, I bet they made 60 trips. And then I didn't really put a dent in it. And then wrestling was doing it, and then cross-country. I mean, kids just volunteer because they just want to help out, which is awesome. With the, because part of that is, you can see where Mr. Fogg reaches out. You saw a whole bunch of different groups, whether it's Fairmont Industries, Hope Squad, Career Tech, all the different foods classes, because it's a big deal to go from growing it right there. And then if you're talking about global foods and cooking, well, why not? They would go out, pull tomatoes off, and then cook the tomatoes. And so it was really, really cool that way. I think we got more kids eating sweet potatoes that way than you would imagine. And then we also had stuff going on out at the farm, and I think that's where part of Ryan's leadership came into because he's been going out to the farm. We have a regenerative organic farm that Mr. Fogg's gotten us out to, and we do a lot of stuff with that. And, you know, Ryan's one of the older guys in the group. And so last year as a junior, he went out and he would lead a group, they would get to the farm, and he would just, he would lead the group. But I said, here's the job, and he would get the job done. He's done it for two years, and we had some questions on the hours, and Mr. Fogg's like, oh, no. He said, I may have rounded down. I mean, he may have more out there and he's still going, but really, really just appreciate where he's come to and just to be a leader, and I'm just so proud of you and where you're at. Sorry. But I think that's what people feel about the school, and I think the more people and more groups you have working together for really cool things and good things, the better it, the better it ends up for everybody. Everybody can enjoy the courtyard. We've got it set up. You know, the whole idea of the past was just so kids could walk out and grab cherry tomatoes and eat them. If you wanted a pepper, cucumber, whatever you wanted, you could just go grab it and eat it, and, you know. And I think a big piece of that was, one time we were out at the farm, and we went to eat some cherry tomatoes, and they're like, Mr. Renshaw, I hasn't been to the store yet. I'm like, I'm like, guys, watch this. And then actually, you know, they were eating, I'm like grapes, you know? But I think it just goes into, they just, everybody's having a good time. Everybody really likes to support one another and to make the place look better, and I just appreciate their work and their work, and just everybody's rallying around with the community to help Fairmont have a great space for kids.
And this is why I bring the team, because they do it justice. So thank you all, and thank you for having us today. Thank you.
Nice job.
I want you guys to know that we have talked with Mr. Fogg about coordinating some of this in the bar and school. Probably, they're probably following some of it. A lot of it's very dependent on, we're not in school, but we're trying to coordinate how we can get some of it into our regional areas. Yes.
Ready, facilities master plan update, Ms. McCarthy-Stewart.
Well, good evening, Board of Education. As we really are in full throttle of our master facility and our strategic plan, I thought it was more prudent today to talk about the recent announcement of the middle school merger. So myself and the team are here to recap the Board of Education and our audience here this evening to go through that. But before I dive into this information, I just want to say thank you to our Food Service Department. You are outstanding, just to be self-sufficient, but also how engaged they are with our learners and making sure they connect to all things going around with the community and the city and the schools. So thank you very much to the Food Department. Great job, student leaders, Mr. Renshaw, Mr. Dinslow. As I was listening to them, I, we think about, as we dive into this, one school better together. We know that from what we just heard, just a small but very important, to have that real collaborative effort at the high school. And we're better together when we do work together. So we know that the announcement with the middle school merger has been difficult and emotional, and we recognize that. And as myself, the team, the board, the district, and we've tried to be very thoughtful about our approach, and we wanted to do our due diligence in terms of making sure that this was the best direction under the circumstances for our district, and always with student well-being in mind. This is a recap on the screen of the district mission statement, which our board members adhere to, honor and respect, not due to, they just read it each board member, but they live it. So throughout this process, in the merger of the middle school, we've had some commitments, and I've actually added a few commitments based on just feedback through our most recent family forums. But we are committed to really actively listening to this implementation phase. We know that the decision is one that is our responsibility, based on all the information you're going to hear in just a moment. However, the logistics and the implementation and the care and the consideration, we will be very active with our stakeholders. We're going to coordinate clear communication and deliverable timelines throughout this process so that we are fully ready to embrace and welcome all our students together for the '26, '27 school year. We're going to establish working teams of stakeholders. Your voice will be represented and heard in our committees throughout this process. We're going to develop activities that build and enhance that sense of community that is really embedded in the culture of Kettering City Schools. We want to honor the vibrant history and the well-established traditions of our schools. And one that I just want to emphasize because it's come up quite a bit, and I know it's, as we go through this and we've done the due diligence and the research, we are able to do this by really maintaining the class sizes that our sixth and through eighth graders have benefited from in this district. That's, it's important, it's a priority, the programmings, the opportunities, the courses, as well as the class sizes with our high-quality caring staff. That will absolutely continue. So this is a, as you, as Jeff Johnson, our Director of Business Operations, as he comes to the stage and gives you a little bit more information, I would just want to take in the ages of our buildings. These are 12 buildings. So at this time, Director of Operations, Jeff Johnson.
Thank you, Mindy. Yeah, I always like to start with this slide. You can kind of visually just see it, you can kind of see the age of our buildings, see when they were all built. The district, we manage 12 buildings with ages exceeding 58 years. With this here presents challenges across all of our facilities. We have an escalating cost, deferred things that you would need to work on, and operational efficiencies, so. The OFCC, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, they did assessments of all of our buildings, and we want to focus on just the middle school. The purples that you see there on your right, those are all critical needs that need to be addressed for pretty soon. As you can see, it was built in 1949 with enrollment of almost 600. We have put some money into that in a bond back in 2002. We put about $5 million, and then throughout the years, we've invested- We put about five million dollars, and then throughout the years, we've invested into that building. So, the OFCC, what they do is, they do an assessment to look at renovating the building or building new. After the assessment, they determine that it would be better to build new than to renovate the building. And just the cost to renovate the one building there, Van Buren, would be over thirty-two million dollars. We currently operate two middle schools, KMS and Van Buren. As you can see there in the middle, Kettering Middle School currently is two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand square feet. As we worked through the process with our consultants looking for a new middle school, our new middle school that we would like to build would be about two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand square feet. So, you can kind of see the square footage there. According to the OFCC, we're about forty-one percent oversized, just in our two middle schools alone. Here's our enrollment. These are projections that we've looked from twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, all the way to twenty-thirty-two. And you can see that grade six through eight, our maximum capacity that we're looking at is sixteen-sixty-four students. So, we feel there's room, ample room for our students and the capacity for Kettering Middle School. So, these are some of the costs that we've incurred, that we've done over there at Van Buren. Different things between HVAC, some roofing, there's some structural stuff over there. So, we have invested into Van Buren, we've put money into Van Buren, but a lot of these are, keep escalating to the point of, of replacement at this point. Again, here's just another quick snapshot. Overall, the number of work orders we receive continues to outpace both our staffing capacity and our funding. There are many needs across the district. While Van Buren may not be the most in work orders, it definitely has the most critical needs of all of our buildings. Up next, I'd like to have our treasurer, Justin Blevins.
Thank you, Jeff. So, what you're looking at right now is the estimated cost of deferred maintenance projects that we anticipate we would need to address at Van Buren within the next one to five years. Many of these costs, it's hard to tell whether they're going to come up six months from now or five years from now. And so, worst-case scenario is that we would be addressing multiple costs at one time. So, just under three million dollars that we would need to spend in these deferred maintenance projects. This is a breakdown of annual costs that through the unification process, we would look to avoid. A total cost savings is anticipated to be four-point-nine million dollars over the next five years, by, again, going through the unification process now versus trying to address those critical needs discussed on the last slide, as well as the, the costs here presented. Now, we'll turn it back over to Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Dan Von Handorf. I'm going to go ahead and raise this up.
That's not quite enough, Mr. Blevins. Thank you, though. So, I know for our middle school parents, this news brought a lot of emotions. I'm one of those with a lot of emotions. Those of you that know me know, I've got a current seventh grader at Van Buren Middle School, and so, dealing with those emotions, it took me about a week to think through it, and then I came to the realization that we truly can be better together. There are just some amazing things at Van Buren Middle School, but it has nothing to do with that building. It has to do with the people that are in that building. There are amazing teachers there, amazing kids there, amazing families. There are also amazing things going on at Kettering Middle School, and it has nothing to do with that building. It has to do with the kids, the teachers, the families there. And so, after some serious reflection, it was apparent to me that we truly can be better together by having all of those great people together in one building. I'm going to highlight just a couple of things that are up there. The first thing that I want to highlight is, through this process, no staff members are going to lose their job. And so, all of those great people at Van Buren and at Kettering Middle School, they're going to come together to form one great new school together. Nobody's losing their job. Another really exciting thing as a middle school parent is, we're going to have more options for kids with better programming. So, a nice thing about having all those teachers and resources in one space is, we'll have a better opportunity for our kids to get music classes, extracurricular classes, because there's more flexibility in their schedule to get what they need. Another really exciting thing is the opportunity for more extracurriculars. There are a group of clubs at Van Buren Middle School and a different group of clubs at Kettering Middle School. When they're together, our kids will be able to benefit from all of those extracurricular activities that they don't have access to right now. Some other things, support and services, all of our intervention specialists and experts will be in one building. Our students with special needs will have all of those experts right there at their service. We will have two nurses at the middle school to provide nursing services to our students. We'll have two resources on campus, and so, not only will our middle schools have two Kettering police officers there on campus, but right across the parking lot is Indian Riffle Elementary School, who will be able to share that school resource officer. So, together on that campus, we'll have a lot more safety and security there. And then finally, that Firebird connection, our athletic teams did that a number of years ago. We used to have Van Buren and Kettering Middle School. They were pretty fierce rivals. My kids don't know that rivalry, because they've always been Firebirds, they've always been on the same team, Van Buren and KMS together. To do that, there are a number of groups that we need to engage, so let's talk about that a little bit. Number one, we did a lot of research on districts that have done this before, and it's really, really important that we're not putting Van Buren into Kettering Middle School. We're taking those two middle schools, and we're developing a brand-new school, complete with a brand-new name. And so, we have a committee that is working together to come up with some possible names for this new middle school together. And we're talking about plans, but the best idea that I've heard is having our kids vote on what they want their new middle school to be called. Some other groups that we need to make sure that we engage are students. And so, we have a panel of students that are going to help us develop activities for kids, so everybody feels safe and welcome in this new middle school. Our families, our families are going to have some change, and they're going to need to make sure that they know and understand and feel comfortable in this new middle school. And then finally, our staff. We met with our Van Buren staff and our Kettering Middle School staff, we listened to their questions, and we need to make sure that we have activities for our staff, so that everybody feels welcome in this new middle school. Finally, this is not something new to Kettering. This is what we've always done. You're standing here right now at Fairmont High School. Back in nineteen eighty-three, it was Fairmont East and Fairmont West. And if you want to talk about a bitter rivalry, talk to somebody who was at one of those two schools. But they came together, they collaborated, and they formed a better high school together. Things like, in this building, we have a world-class Career Tech Center, five stars, one of the best in all of Ohio. We wouldn't have that if we weren't together. We have advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes, some of the toughest classes in all of Ohio, rigorous, challenging classes. We could not support that if we did not have one school together. And finally, our special education program, we do have all the experts here. We have districts coming from across the state of Ohio to see what we're doing here to help service our kids with special needs. This truly is what we've always done, and we're excited to work through this process to make this new middle school truly better together. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent McCarty Stewart to finish out the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Von Handorf. We had a, initially sent out a question and answer. And through the, the forums, through the staff meetings over the last couple of weeks, we have an, actually tomorrow evening, where we'll talk about, more about the master facility plan. It will be hosted at KMS. It'll offer a building tour there, and so, it's an opportunity to engage a Q and A session with our panel of, of experts, as well as Board President, Mark Martin, will be attending that as well. But we have been gathering all the questions that we've been receiving and adding a lot to the logistics, because now as you, as, as families, as staff, as students have been processing the information, all the really finite details and logistics, we've gathered those, we'll, we'll send those back out, but that is the work that our committees are fully embracing moving forward. Again, often asked, is the middle, in the middle of a master facility plan, why now? Going back to the amount of money that we would need to continue to invest in the building, even for next year and for five more years before we, we could potentially have a new building, is, is not a fiscally responsible decision, and we need to make sure that we are, making sure that our funds are being reinvested back into the students and the direct impact and programs that we can do. So, I'm often asked that, but at this time, if there's any comments or other questions from the board, I can entertain those at this time. Okay?
I figure I come up here, since everyone else tends to come up doing presentations, I'm Mark Martin, I'm the Board President, and I work with these fine people every day to talk about the business that goes on in the district. And ultimately, if you look at, if we went back to the original slide, it talks about how we go about financially, sorry, providing a positive and innovative learning environment while responsibly utilizing our resources. So, one of the questions is, why now? Why did we decide to do this now as far as the merger of the middle schools? Why not now? If not now, when? Because in the end, we talk about responsibly utilizing our resources, we won't rehash all the facts that were put before you, but we're talking millions of dollars in upgrades that will be necessary just to sustain the current buildings, to keep them warm, dry, and safe, and provide the resources for our staff to do their jobs every day and for our children to learn. So, why not now? And also, you look at things from a standpoint of safety globally. We have a number of buildings throughout the district. We have a great relationship with our Kettering Police Department and Fire Department, but as far as the resource officers, you know, they're spread across our multiple buildings. Through the consolidation, now we can have dual resource officers at all of our buildings to enhance our security and safety for our children and our staff. But ultimately, it's also a joint venture with the state. As we proceed with this endeavor, as you talk about the multiple projects that we're bringing before the community, it's about advancing Kettering as far as its education and the services that we provide, and not just looking at the here and now and saying, oh, these buildings look great from a facade on the outside, but if you walk the grounds and you come to some of our forums and you tour the buildings, you will see that they're not up to par to meet our students and our staff's needs. Technology continues to advance. You know, we have a lot of resources that are needed from electrical capacity. If you tour and look at some of our classrooms, we don't have the number of outlets to sustain the ability for everyone to charge their devices, including our staff, to even be able to project. So, it's not often that, you know, board, we get up and we talk before you to share, but the why is, this is necessary. It's now. Think about the costs that the, the cost share through the Ohio Facilities Commission in this project. If you think about the infrastructure, and we lay out the chillers and the boilers and other infrastructure, infrastructure that will be needed in order to keep the facilities warm, safe and dry, you're talking some total across all the buildings over a hundred-and-eighty million dollars. That's nearly half of the total cost of what we're going to look at going forward. And in the end, we charged Mindy with looking at, how do we responsibly utilize our resources? And the merger or the unification of the middle schools is one of the answers. So, we have three projects that are coming before you. We will, you know, I'm presenting or I'm sharing in the discussion tomorrow at the forum. Happy to dialogue with all of you. Please attend, ask your questions, so we can really take that back and evaluate this. But if you look at the three projects that we have before us, you talk about Barnes, you talk about the middle school, and you talk about ultimately the master facilities plan, they're all mutually exclusive, but they're all connected. People have asked about Barnes. If you can go and find the resources for Barnes, why couldn't you find that for this project, for the middle school or for the master facility program? We didn't find the Barnes situation, they found us. Private organization came to us with a proposal to look at utilizing that facade and that infrastructure to build forth a, an initiative that will be a benefit for our entire city. So, through that endeavor, we also get to move out of our existing leased facilities to where we can save resources. Again, responsibly utilizing our resources, so that we don't have to continue to come back to the community repeatedly, looking for cost share on making the necessary upgrades and improvements across the district. So, I just wanted to share on behalf of the board, these are some of the things that we're looking at. We're not coming at this lightly. We're not just looking at it as, let's go spend some money. No one wants more taxes, okay? Myself included. But I live here, I play here, and I work here, and I'm invested in Kettering, and hopefully you all are, you know, continue to be invested in Kettering as well as far as education. But ultimately, we charged Mindy with, look at what's going on in the district, and let's look at what we need to do to sustain our operations going forward. And the unification of the middle schools is nearly going to save annual operating costs, almost a million dollars annually. If you talk about all the facilities, the electrical, electric, the water, and all the other upgrades that would be needed, plus the staff attrition over time, no one's losing their job through this endeavor. We are looking at utilizing all of our resources, and then as people determine that they, they no longer want to work and they're going to retire, then we will evaluate and right-size the staffing going forward. So, this is a plan that has been put together, but we continue to want your feedback. We need your feedback, because in the end, this doesn't move forward without you, the voting public as, you know, community members. But ultimately, we want to provide a vehicle for education for our students going forward, and give them the environments in which they can thrive, which is having upgraded facilities and equipment. So, you want to have some, anyone else want to share?
Very articulate, I don't think I can match that. I, I think he touched upon a number of the issues, certainly the Van Buren issue, the greater, larger district-wide issue, and a little bit about the Barnes issue. What was mentioned, and it's a big piece of this, on the component that deals with the greater good for the entire district, the state of Ohio said they will pick up forty-three percent of the cost. That comes out to a hundred-and-fifty-nine-ish, some million dollars that we can't say no to. If we say no, we still have to deal with a couple of hundred million dollars of total repairs, et cetera, for all of our buildings. So, it's a once-in-a-generational opportunity. We all, as Kettering residents, have been putting money to the state through our taxes. If we don't take advantage of that, somebody down the road is going to. So, instead of your money coming to Kettering, the next district in line, as far as getting state help, they're going to get our money. The greatest reason for doing this, this is going to be good for kids. We can say all we want about buildings, but it's going to be great for students, they're going to have a better learning environment. Mr. Von Handorf talked about the enhanced opportunities for students. We simply have got to do it. You want us to be good stewards with your money, and you want us to deliver a good product for your sons and daughters, and this is the best way to do it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, School of Distinction, a mental, mental wellness award from Montgomery County Educational Services Center, Ms. Cox.
I had all of my notes pulled up, and then I got so enthralled with the presentation that I lost them, so, sorry. Thank you so much for having me this evening, and I just also want to say that Mary Lynn mentioned it, but she does provide our food service for our learning centers, and we just cannot echo Mindy's comments about how great she personally is to work with, but also her staff and the service that Kettering City Schools provides to our students that come from twenty-seven districts across a couple of regions. So, I just really want to say thank you. Great presentation also. So, I am so excited to be here this evening, and again, thank you so much for having me. I am Shannon Cox. For those of you who I don't know, I am the Superintendent of the Montgomery County Educational Service Center, and I have the distinct honor of being able to work with Kettering City Schools on a lot of different projects, but also get to help Schools on a lot of different projects, but also get to help them provide services to your students that hopefully enhance the quality of their educational experience, but we would also say just enhance the overall aspect of your community. Because you have taken this so seriously, but we are here tonight to actually celebrate all of your school buildings, and I can't say that to every presentation that I come to for this particular award. A few years back, just to give you a quick glimpse of history, a few years back, the Adamus Board here in Montgomery County came to me and said, listen, we have these prevention programs that we know are scientifically research-based, they make good programs for kids to be part of in school, and we know schools need them, we just are having a hard time getting into schools. And I said, well, the good news is, we're already in schools, so let us, let's come together and work together. That prevention programming made such a difference that we realized that it wasn't just about preventing suicide or just preventing, and again, we want to prevent suicide, but it's not just about the prevention programming, it's really about making certain that our students, our staff, and our communities really focus on the whole child, the whole family, the whole school district, the whole community. And that's more than just prevention. We need intervention services, we need triage services, we need, we just need to really think about and wrap around the, again, the family, the students, and the school districts. And so in order to do that, we set out on a quest to kind of shift gears from just providing prevention services to really investing in a comprehensive, system-wide approach that takes care of the whole human. And so we shifted from schools of excellence and prevention programming to schools of distinction in mental wellness programming. And I, again, am here very humbled to come before you as a Board of Education, but also as a community, to say that every single one of your schools is getting that award tonight, and I just can't be more proud of that, and you should as well. To just do a couple of highlights across the district, we are recognizing you because this is not just a program here at Kettering City Schools. Not once did you ever come about this as just the thing to do or one more thing to do. You came about this as a unified district-wide commitment to the well-being of every student, every employee, and every family. Every single building in your district created and executed. It's not about just having of the plan, it's about executing on the plan. But that plan was tailored to very specific student needs. The first one, investing in prevention systems and efficacy. You built a stronger MTSS and PBIS, and I heard several of you got award notifications today about that PBIS award. But every building worked towards strengthening its multi-tiered system of support. This included intensive system analysis, more training for your teams, and professional learning on neuroscience, helping your staff understand how the brain really works to better support students' behaviors and emotional regulation. Also, teacher efficacy. Here in Kettering, you trained multiple building teams in both whole-child and restorative practices, and these teams then became experts coaching colleagues in the buildings. This investment, and it truly was an investment, has elevated the competence and capability and the efficacy of teacher, of every educator in this, in the system. Goal number two is that you committed to a community and family connection. Prevention must extend beyond the classroom. You have significantly strengthened your ties with your community partners, and though there have been, there are just too many partners to list, we would forget somebody, these collaborations provide critical resources, adding essential layers of support directly to our students and families. Teachers and staff cannot do it alone, and your community has leaned in, and again, congratulations for that. Kettering City Schools also redefined the approach to attendance. You focused on supportive interventions, finding the root cause of absences. We can't any longer just say kids are absent. We need to lean in and say, why are they absent, and how can we help those families get kids back into school? And so again, kudos to you for doing exactly that. And here's how you measured the impact. The comprehensive effort creating a healthier, more resilient learning environment, we saw a daily increase in, in those measures. Your attendance rates increasing. Your number of families served through our community outreach, growing. Your family showed up to expand trust and partnership between home and school. I cannot say that in every school district in Montgomery County. And the third major impact that was measured was the number of families served with our mental health resources, growing and taking advantage so that more students and families are gaining the skills they need to not just survive, but thrive in your community. Because of that, again, I want to say congratulations to Kettering City Schools for having every single school district receive this School of Distinction and Mental Wellness Award. We're going to call each building up to give them their award. Hopefully, they'll find a nice place to hang it on the wall. And here's what I'm going to also commit to, because I'm pretty sure you have one for each middle school, and after sitting through that, we will redo that plaque, once you have come up with the name, and we will put the years on it so that we make certain that we are part of your, I already forgot the title of it, Better Schools Together campaign, because we believe in that as well. So first, first award, oh my gosh, my eight-year-old grandson is calling me right now, let me just decline that very quickly. Sorry, buddy. All right. The first award goes to Kettering Middle School. Our next school building, Indian Riffle Elementary School. And we'll give them to it tomorrow. All right. Our next one, Oakview Elementary School. Former colleagues. Our next award goes to John F. Kennedy Elementary School. Our next school building, Greenmont Elementary School. Our next building, Orchard Park Elementary School. Next, we have Van Buren Middle School. Some things never change. Kettering Fairmont High School. Beavertown Elementary School. J.E. Press Elementary School. Okay, and last, but certainly not least, Southdale Elementary School. She's at the other student event. So if I could just end with these last two things. First and foremost, leadership matters. So Board of Education, thank you for being the leaders in the community that allow these types of things to happen. Mindy and Carrie and team, your dedication to making certain that your students and your staff and your families have what they need, even if it's just a plaque, goes well beyond the plaque. I always say, there's work and there's legacy work, and Kettering City Schools is doing legacy work, so thank you for that. The last thing I will say is, young people in this room, it has been a long board meeting already, and you have been so well behaved. Adults in the room, it's been a long board meeting already, and you've been so well behaved. Congratulations to you all, and again, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening.
Ms. Cox. I forgot to capture one point at the, our prior agenda item, and ultimately, with the, the district, we're creating that Better Together Committee. So if you are interested in being a part of that committee, being involved, please reach out to Dan and/or Mindy, connect with them, so that we can get you a part of the committee and get your feedback, get your voice as we move forward. So I apologize that I didn't catch that note, that's what happens when you don't look at your notes when you're talking, so blame it on, you know, my, my mind and not my heart, so. Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Cox. Next item on the agenda is Portrait of a Graduate, Mr. Von Handorf and Mr. Miller.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. I'm going to go off script for just a minute. Could all the students in the recital hall, could you all stand up for a minute, if you're a Kettering City Schools student? So Ms., so Mrs. Cox, she mentioned this, stay standing for a minute. So I've got four kids, and not one of them would be as good as any of you have been so far, so, students, great job, fantastic job. And then, students, while you're up, that just doesn't happen by accident. I know, since you've been so well behaved here, your parents have done just a tremendous job teaching you how to do that. So, students, while you're standing, could you give your parents and guardians a round of applause for teaching you some amazing things tonight? All right. So you can sit down for just a minute, but in a minute, you're going to be right back up here. Board, it's, it's my honor and privilege to present the fifth year of recognizing our outstanding students and staff this year, who exhibit the traits of our district's Portrait of a Firebird, a big part of the Kettering City Schools' strategic plan for continuous improvement. The Portrait of a Firebird was created by our community teachers and staff as attributes that Kettering City Schools students need to master to be successful in life. The Portrait of a Firebird attributes are engaged collaborator, lifelong learner, critical thinker, thoughtful communicator, and global citizen. In October, we had two-hundred-and-forty students through Kettering City Schools that were nominated by teachers and staff for modeling what it takes to be an engaged collaborator. From all those students, each building picked just one student to represent their building here tonight. We congratulate these outstanding Kettering students who were selected by their teachers to represent their schools as engaged collaborators. This year, we are expanding the Portrait of a Firebird recognition. I'd like to introduce Ken Miller, Assistant Superintendent of Human Capital, to explain this exciting change.
Good evening, Board of Education, guests. This is very exciting. This is our first year recognizing outstanding staff who embody the traits of a Portrait of a Firebird. Tonight, we're going to recognize thirteen staff members of the one-hundred-and-thirty-seven staff members that were nominated by students, parents, colleagues, and administrators who exemplified the traits of an engaged collaborator. So those who are being recognized tonight, staff, congratulations, well deserved.
All right. Students and staff, when your name is called, please come forward, receive your certificate from Mrs. Bassin, and stay up front until all students and staff are recognized. And so to model that, Mr. Miller and I are going to demonstrate how we would like you to stand. So Mr. Miller is going to play the role of a student, so he is going to stand in front like a student would, and then the staff member is going to stand behind. All right. We ready? All right, here we go. First up, and I know it has been a while, I know, for example, one student, they had basketball practice, they had to leave, so we recognize that, and we really do appreciate you staying for this tonight. So first, from Kekek, we have Lucas Depew. Now, I do not think Lucas is here because I believe his dad is right now conducting in the auditorium, the Orf Ensemble, who amazingly got selected to go to Louisville to receive a national award for music. And so Lucas and his dad are, if you listen, you might be able to hear them, they're playing right over there for the Orf Ensemble, but I'm going to read anyway. Lucas is a kind friend and eager helper in the classroom. He enjoys learning and includes his peers in his play, and Lucas was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Potter.
So we begin recognizing staff with Cheryl Stewart, childcare teacher at Kettering Early Childhood Education Center. Cheryl is always willing to help other staff members anywhere in the building. She collaborates with other teachers to implement the same learning goals for her students that she shares with other teachers. She is always sharing resources, materials, and strategies to help students learning. She gives one-hundred percent each day to our students at Kekek. She also gives extra to staff by working every event, planning staff potlucks, and making sure everyone has a birthday card. Cheryl is a wonderful person to be around and does her best to share her smile as she collaborates with others for a positive environment.
Cheryl was also an amazing preschool teacher for my kids, so thank you, Cheryl, for that. Next up, from Beavertown Elementary, Carmen Taylor. Carmen shows excellent collaboration skills when working with her classmates. She is respectful in feedback that she gives to her classmates and shows patience when helping classmates through a question. Carmen's classmates recognized and nominated her as an engaged collaborator. Carmen was nominated by Mrs. Cochran and her whole class. Congratulations.
Also, from Beavertown, we have Christine Wright, intervention specialist. Mrs. Wright has been instrumental in helping my son navigate his first year at Beavertown. She keeps the lines of communication open and partners with parents to help develop and implement plans to support students. Christine leads with kindness, always wears a smile, and goes the extra mile to make a difference for teachers and students alike. Congratulations.
Next, from Greenmont Elementary, Prashia Morgan. Prashia always listens to her classmates' ideas and adds on to their thoughts or respectfully disagrees with during discussion. She actively participates, bringing quality questions and ideas to our class discussions. That's from her teacher, Mrs. Dome. Prashia is a diligent student who seeks to understand and partner with her classmates. She is a leader at Greenmont and works with her school ambassador partner to complete their daily tasks of hanging our school flag. That is from Principal Ms. Goodwine. So Prashia not only got nominated by her teacher, but also principal. Congratulations, Prashia.
Also, from Beaver, I'm sorry, Greenmont Elementary, we have Don Kelly, fourth-grade teacher. Don is always quick to answer and to collaborate on library lessons, whether it's genre selection, seasonal Google slides from the library, or special projects that support learning in her classroom. Truly a team player, a trusted colleague, and a person dedicated to the betterment of her whole class in all ways. We are fortunate to have Don Kelly on our staff and our fourth- We are fortunate to have Don Kelly on our staff, and our fourth graders are blessed to be academically guided and grounded by her. Congratulations.
Next up, from Indian Riffle Elementary, William Hellman. William is an engaged collaborator in our fifth grade classroom because he consistently contributes thoughtful ideas, listens respectfully to others, and works hard to ensure everyone's voice is heard. He takes an active role in group discussions and projects, offering creative solutions and encouraging his peers to do their best. William's positive attitude and teamwork make him a valued and dependable member of any group. William was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Frederick.
Also from Indian Riffle Elementary, we have Barbara Lloyd, kindergarten teacher. Ms. Lloyd orchestrates the IEP team like a maestro. Collaborating seamlessly with intervention specialists, student teachers, substitutes, specials, special teachers, our physical therapists, and our nurse to ensure every moment of the school day is structured, inclusive, and uplifting. Because of her dedicated coordination and heartfelt commitment, my student comes home brimming with excitement about every part of his day, proof that when she's in sync with the team, his school experience shines. Thank you.
Next up, from JFK Elementary, Liam Lambert. Liam is always willing to share his thoughts and opinions, but he still listens to what others have to say. I enjoy talking with Liam and sharing different perspectives with him. Liam was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Ayers.
Also from John F. Kennedy Elementary, we have Ashley Pike, fourth grade teacher. Mrs. Pike has only been my daughter's teacher for a few months, but she has already taken the time to get to know and connect with her truly. She works closely with students and families to create a supportive learning environment, showing how collaboration and understanding help every child succeed. Congratulations.
All right, so I gotta fix this real quick. So Liam was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Copley, who was right there. And Kylie was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Ayers. So let's come down, Kylie Abrams. Kylie is a good friend to everyone she meets and is always displaying kindness and encouragement to her classmates. Kylie works well with others and listens to their ideas and respects their opinions, even if they're different from hers. Kylie loves to learn and it shows through her positivity and active engagement in her learning. That is from Mrs. Ayers.
Also, JE Prass Elementary School, we have Paula Rhodes, kindergarten teacher. Paula works to support the members of her kindergarten teaching team in making student-centered decisions and solving problems creatively. She is willing to listen and share ideas and work towards solutions. She has made special arrangements for our son to learn well past what is being taught in kindergarten. She is kind, thoughtful, and extremely easy to speak with, along with excellent communication skills. Paula has also done so much to make our school a happy and engaging home for all. Paula has a constant smile, endless energy, and fabulous ideas to bring the staff together. Congratulations.
Next up, from Oakview Elementary, Tegan Harden. Tegan is an engaged collaborator who eagerly shares her ideas and encourages others to contribute. She listens thoughtfully, helps build on her classmates' thoughts, and works well to create a positive and inclusive environment. Tegan was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Goheen.
Also from Oakview Elementary, we have Amy Scott, second grade teacher. Mrs. Scott has demonstrated exceptional skills as an engaged collaborator. She encourages us to be a united front, working together as a team between home and school. She communicates openly and frequently and cares deeply about how best to educate each of her students. Congratulations.
Next up, from Orchard Park Elementary, Brian Derusi. Brian is extremely kind and thoughtful in his words and actions. He respects others' opinions and does his best to honor others in all that he does. Brian was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Meyer.
Also from Orchard Park Elementary School, we have Kayla Treen, kindergarten teacher. Ms. Treen, oh, sorry. Ms. Treen has done a great job of finding ways to keep my kindergarten daughter engaged and challenged in the classroom. She includes me in conversations about her ideas and values not only my thoughts and input, but also my daughter's. Congratulations.
Next, from Southdale Elementary, Sully McCoy. Sully is an engaged learner and he is also quick to engage his peers in learning. He is kind and respectful with his words. He is an encourager and a very good listener. He remembers what people have said and is able to compromise. Everyone always wants him in their group because he is the perfect engaged collaborator. Sully was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Duskalakis.
From Southdale Elementary School, we have Olivia Marino, fifth grade teacher. Olivia is one of our department chair liaisons. She communicates clearly and efficiently. She is also quick to share things she learns, such as the latest AI tool or a Canva hack. Most importantly, she is in charge of our Southdale Scoop, a fifth grade news program that we air on Friday mornings. She encourages the fifth graders to incorporate, incorporate school and district goals into the Scoop. For example, in the last two weeks, Scoop crew members asked questions about what an engaged collaborator looked like, encouraging students in all classes and grades to think, turn, and then talk. She is a role model for an engaged collaborator. Congratulations.
Next, from Kettering Middle School, Halim Watkins. Halim consistently demonstrates strong teamwork and leadership skills in group settings. As a group leader, Halim ensures that everyone's voice is heard and that all members feel included and valued. He is an excellent listener who considers others' ideas with respect and provides positive, constructive feedback to help the team succeed. Halim approaches collaboration with kindness, patience, and politeness, creating a supportive environment where everyone can contribute their best work. Halim was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Shackelford.
Also from Kettering Middle School, from Food and Nutrition, we have Tammy Seiler. Tammy runs a very efficient kitchen. She collaborates with the school nurse, staff, and parents daily, making sure every kid has something good to eat, especially our kids with special dietary needs. She goes above and beyond each day to accommodate all kids and staff who choose to eat our school breakfast and lunches. Congratulations.
Next, from Van Buren Middle School, Caroline Fagan. Caroline is also quite a basketball player, as she is at basketball practice right now. Caroline is an engaged collaborator in science class. She listens carefully to others, shares her ideas respectfully, and contributes thoughtfully during group work. Caroline communicates clearly, values her teammates' perspectives, and actively participates to help her group succeed. That is from her science teacher, Mr. Duncan. And Caroline is a very hard worker that is always respectful of the needs of her fellow students, displays a strong sense of responsibility by always completing her work on time, and promotes safe practices in classrooms by being an example of the proper way to follow classroom procedures. And that nomination was also from science teacher, Mr. Hotchkiss. So Caroline got nominated by two science teachers. Congratulations, Caroline.
From Van Buren Middle School, seventh grade, seventh grade science teacher, Michael Klein. Michael consistently demonstrates exceptional communication skills and actively engages with his colleagues every day. He is a passionate advocate for students, ensuring their needs and voices are heard while maintaining open, meaningful communication with their families. His dedication fosters a supportive and collaborative environment for everyone involved. Congratulations.
From Fairmont High School, Maya Gibbons. Maya is an engaged and dependable collaborator who consistently takes initiative in her senior interactive media class. She demonstrates leadership through her involvement in events like Supper Club, eighth grade CTC visits, and fifth grade tours, where she represents our program with professionalism and maturity. Maya is always willing to step up and contribute whenever needed. Maya was recommended by the career tech principal, Mrs. Will.
Performing Arts Facilities Manager, John Gentry. John makes everyone who uses the auditorium, recital hall, recital hall, trend, and other performance spaces in the district look amazing. Board meetings, performance, performing arts events, guest speakers, and more. He's a world-class talent who works with all of the groups that use those spaces with professionalism and creative problem solving. He makes it look effortless. Congratulations. And lastly, we have, from our transportation department, Regina Smith, dispatcher. Regina is an outstanding collaborator who consistently brings teamwork, positivity, and creative problem solving. She actively listens to others' ideas, thoughtfully builds on them, and ensures everyone feels valued and heard. Her reliability and supportive attitude make her a trusted partner and a true asset to any team. She is a dispatcher slash scheduler for field trips and school routes, and she handles serious student care situations with calm composure and professionalism. Congratulations.
Mr. Martin, Board of Education, Superintendent McCarty Stewart, we just couldn't be more proud of the students and staff in front of you. Parents, if you are looking for, for a photo opportunity, right now might be a great time to do that. If you have not gotten that yet, we'll pause for a minute, and then after that, we would love to invite all of our awardees up on stage and get a fist bump or handshake from our Board of Education and Superintendent.
Short commercial break to let everyone exit the facility. That was a great presentation by Dan and Mr. Miller for recognizing our students for, and staff for collaborating, excellent collaborators. So we will move forward with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is Board of Education member reports. Anyone have anything to share? Just wanna reiterate, tomorrow evening, Mindy, where are we? Kettering Middle School, we will have our, an additional community forum, starts at 6:00 PM? 6:00 PM at Kettering Middle School, so come on out if you are so inclined and you wanna collaborate and share comments, concerns with the panel. Next item on the agenda is hearing of the, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. I did not receive any. Moving on to next item on the agenda, information for decision-making, items for upcoming meetings. December 9th, 2025, 6:00 PM, we will have a regular meeting at Greenmont Elementary we will have a regular meeting at Greenmont Elementary School going over personnel items. And January sixth, twenty twenty-six, January sixth, twenty twenty-six, six PM, we will have an organizational meeting, regular meeting, in the recital hall here at Kettering Fairmont High School, again going over personnel items. Next item on the agenda, Board of Education.
I have a couple of motions. First, it is I move that we approve a resolution to proceed with the issuance of bonds. The resolution to proceed with an issue of bonds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two million dollars and certify the same to the Board of Elections.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussions? Mr. Blubb, let's see.
Yep.
Do you take the roll?
You'll take the roll.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, I move that we approve the resolution to close Van Buren Middle School.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Blubbins, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Excuse me, Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, human capital agenda.
I move we approve the human capital agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McCarty Stewart?
Yes, asking the board's approval for the human capital agenda items and the consent agenda.
Any discussion? Mr. Blubbins, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, business services. Do not have any items. So we will move to Officer of the Treasurer agenda.
I move that we approve the Officer of the Treasurer agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Blubbins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Nothing exciting. Probably one of the best things you can hear from the treasurer, so. Uh, we're four months into this fiscal year. Currently, uh, the, uh, through the month of October, we are trending within less than one percent of the forecast and in anticipation of a cash balance increase of one point two million dollars. You got that on the screens?
We don't have it on ours.
Our screen's done. It's okay.
Okay. Sorry, so, okay. So again, that one point two million dollar increase or expected increase to the cash balance is less than one percent of what was forecasted. And that is driven from an expected increase in revenue compared to the forecast of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And then the expenditures are trending favorably in comparison to the forecast by four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So cumulatively, we've got one point two that we anticipate will be added to the cash balance. Now, this will continue to be monitored. A lot of times, timing varies, as you'll know. Each month when I come in here, we see slight differences between the revenue and expenditure variances in the forecast overall. And since the fall forecast was submitted to the board, we're, we've been tracking very close to that. And I don't anticipate any major changes. Last week, the auditors came into the office. They were on site. Because we are a public entity, we get audited by a third party. That information then is submitted audit of state to make sure that we are in compliance with all accounting practices. And that, that work that they did will come back to us later in the year. And I have nothing further to report this month.
Thank you, Mr. Blubbins.
Any discussion, any questions? Mr. Blubbins, please take the roll.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, teaching and learning.
I move that we approve the teaching and learning agenda as it was presented. Second.
Thank you. Mr. McCarty Stewart?
Yes, I'm asking the board's approval on two items. The first one is a recommendation to adopt our Wayfinder for social emotional learning curriculum. This is in compliance with the Ohio Department of Education workforce criteria. The second item is a recommendation to adopt the special education model policies and procedures from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce.
Any questions, discussion? Mr. Blubbins, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is hearing of the public. I did not receive any notices that anyone wanted to speak. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
To adjourn.
Second from Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Blubbins, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.